I'd like to call to order the Select Board meeting of October 2, 2023, pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21. We'll be going into executive session. I'd like a motion on that, please.
So moved.
Second. We will be voting in Mass. today. We do not have a--
No, it's still roll call vote.
Roll call vote on that one. That is correct. Thank you, Ms. McDonald. Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Chair of OCS, four zero. We'll be going into executive session. We hope to return as close to 6:30 p.m. as possible. Thank you very much. Always got to vote that one.
I'd like to call to order the Select Board meeting of October 2, 2023. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing while we honor our veterans, both past and present. Thank you very much. Thanks for joining us. This is an open meeting beginning here in Room 304. We, this meeting is being recorded. One of our members is on Zoom, so therefore each vote will be taken individually. There'll be no roll call voting tonight. The warrant has been signed, and we are ready to go. Hearing on Hungry Pot. Please step forward, introduce yourself, and tell us what's going on.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Selectmen. My name's Attorney Joe Fengless. I'm from the Law Office of Darrow Everett, LLP. I represent the Hungry Pot Restaurant. We are before the Board of Selectmen looking for a full liquor license for the former Azuma Asian Bistro on 466 State Road in Dartmouth. The two owners are here with me. First gentleman in the black leather jacket is Xiao Chen. Next one is Huxain Chen. No relation. And we're simply requesting that you approve their all liquor license for the restaurant that was formerly the Azuma Asian Bistro. Both of the gentlemen, they currently have five restaurants. They're primarily out of Connecticut. They have a restaurant, Hungry Pot, in Danbury, Connecticut, Weathersfield, Connecticut, Manchester, Connecticut, and also West Hartford, Connecticut. They are extending and expanding, and they are taking over the location of 466 State Road, where it's going to be another Hungry Pot restaurant. Their business model is essentially similar to what it previously was, but they're going to be doing like a Korean barbecue-style restaurant, which is, it's unique in the sense that everything is fresh, served, and cooked to order on-site. It's not like buffet-style or something like that. It is a very actually high-end type of restaurant. I have photos of their other restaurants. They are absolutely beautiful. It's not like, I don't know how to say it. It's not like a typical Chinese takeout. This is a full-blown restaurant, and both gentlemen have already put up half a million dollars just to do renovations to the building. And they're expecting to open the last week of November. But I understand if the approval is granted here tonight, which we respectfully request, that it will go to the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission for further review. But this is our first step along our journey, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer any and all questions.
Are they all called Hungry, Hungry Pot?
Four are called the Hungry Pot, one is called the Hungry Crab. The Hungry Crab was their first restaurant, and they-
And where is that?
Hungry Crab is in West Hartford, Connecticut.
We have a store there.
We'll send you down there to-
Yeah, no, I might, I might go down there. Get a hot, we'll get a new furnace for them.
I know exactly where it is. Right down the street from the XL Center in Hartford.
For which one are you talking about?
Hungry Crab.
Hungry Crab. No, it's in Ammu Plaza. It's 1144 New Britta Avenue.
Okay, different, out of the setting.
It's probably like two, three miles from, there was four more. So it's great.
Who's? Ms. McDonald?
No.
Motion to approve.
I can tell, motion.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? Let's vote. Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie? Can you hear me, Mr. Gracie?
He doesn't have his headphones on.
Mr. Gracie?
Try it now, he said.
Little difficulties, be right with you. Don't go anywhere.
Just call Frank.
Matt Gracie?
Yes.
We are voting on the motion. Were you able to hear the motion, Frank?
No, my screen, my screen just showed up.
So don't let him vote then.
So he'll abstain.
Uh, I think, well, I should abstain on this one. Okay, Frank.
I don't know what I'm abstaining on, but I don't care.
It's, Frank, it's the motion for the all liquor license for the Hungry Pot, which is a new restaurant to be located in the old Azumas', which is the restaurant in front of BJ's and by the gas station.
Okay.
I think you should abstain, having had the evidence. Frank, your vote will be to abstain, or are you going to vote for it?
I'll abstain, because I don't, I have no idea what to vote for, so.
Thank you. 4-0 to 1, it passes. Thank you very much.
Gentlemen, I'd just like to say on the record that both gentlemen have recently moved to Dartmouth, and they are Dartmouth residents.
Oh, yay.
For Division Road, Dartmouth, Mass., as they expand their-
Makes it even better.
Business down here, they're gonna stay here and move it along.
Nice. We look forward to a new restaurant.
Nice job.
Members of the Board, thank you very much, and I'd like to make one last comment. I will say I've been doing this for 20-something years, and I have never gone to a town and dealt with better personnel in your clerk's office, in your selectman's office, than the young man and the young lady up there, the computer people. I've never dealt with smarter, better, more polite, more civil people in any other town I have ever been to. It's a credit to you people, and it's a credit to those gentlemen, and that, the young lady who worked up there who helped us along the way. They're outstanding employees.
You should go on our website and put that in.
Thank you.
And that helpful.
Thank you very much.
As an individual from Somerset, we very much appreciate the comment.
Mr. McDonald, please, please, no. I'm just saying, they are a testament to what Dartmouth does.
Thank you. Great to hear.
I guess that payoff worked.
It'd be remiss if I didn't thank Melanie Perry in my office and Chad Deschamps.
All right.
Because they deal with a lot of people, so they're excellent.
Are they related to the attorney?
Good to know.
No, okay, good.
As far as I know.
Okay. Moving along. Next would be a new business change of manager application for Applebee's, Derek Harnett. Please step forward, introduce yourself.
My name is Derek Harnett. I am the new general manager that has taken over the North Dartmouth Applebee's, and I am just here to request a change in name for the liquor license.
Mr. McDonald?
That's pretty much-
Motion to approve.
Yeah. Second.
Second. Any discussion? Let's vote. Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, 5-0. Thank you very much, good luck over there.
I appreciate everything. Thank you as well.
Next. Oh, boy, okay. What do they have next here, the Park Board? Park Board meeting, a joint meeting, and the format, we want to-
Smile at least, will you? Jesus, Jimmy.
Nice group of people here.
Why are we here? Anyone that want to speak first from Park Board, or you want us to talk a little first? You're right ahead?
They can speak, just to, just to kind of give some background. So as everybody knows, the town conducted a feasibility study for, originally it was based on a community center for the town. I think, oh, going on, I'm going to say five years ago when I started, the Park Board invited me to a meeting to talk about a recreation center that they had been pursuing for a number of years. We thought the best course of action was to perform a feasibility study to see what the need is in the community. Back in 21, 2021, we conducted that feasibility study that was funded through town meeting, through our capital planning process. While the feasibility study was done during COVID, it was actually very thorough and detailed, and I mentioned this quite a bit. They could not have in-person workshop meetings, which generally were, were okay-attended. They did an online survey, and that online survey asked a number of questions of the community about what they were looking for in a community center, if they even desired a community center. The survey garnered nearly 1,000 responses, and that is, was unheard of, it still is. We don't get a lot of responses like that. And they demonstrated an overwhelming need in the community that there was a desire for a recreation center in town, for the community. We thought that was great, so we moved forward, and we, back in March of '22, the architect that we had brought on board to do the feasibility study presented the feasibility study, and what were some options along the way. They presented, you know, three different scenarios. I think it came to be that there was a recommendation from the Board and the Park Board at the time to do a facility with three basketball courts in parallel and perhaps a walking track. Everyone was in support of it. And then the next phase was to determine how to fund the design of the facility. COVID was going through the process, but also this ARPA funding became available. There was an opportunity to fund the design using ARPA funding, which would benefit the entire community. Last year, the Select Board voted to fund that design. So we had moved forward with the procurement process. A part of that is the state requires that the town obtain an owner's project manager to help spearhead the process, selecting the architects, moving forward with the design, and overseeing and supporting the town. We had done the procurement with Tim Lancaster, the Director of Parks and Recreation, and he and I and our internal team issued the procurement, reviewed the submittals. We received a number of very qualified submittals. And now we're at that phase where the Select Board and the Park Board need to decide whether they want to move forward with the design of the facility or some other option. We are, you know, certainly want to move forward with the design, it's what the community is desired, but I wanted to make sure that the Select Board and the Park Board are all on the same page moving forward and what they desire, and so here we are. So we asked to have this joint meeting to discuss moving forward.
We certainly welcome comments from any one of the members, but just step forward when you're ready, whatever it might be, step forward to the podium.
Hi, Jim Viera, Chairman of the Park Board. Yeah, definitely, we, the design that we looked at, when we had it with you, when we met with you back then, it's the design I think we were looking at, maybe, we want basically a basic, nothing really fancy, a basic design, a place where we can use it for not only recreation, but for, as I think it was Mr. McGinnis was explaining, like during the pandemic, when we needed a place to meet, and the people needed a place to go, it was that. The seniors could use it. There's just so many options for, for this. We need to know what the next step is, you know, so we know what funding we're looking for. We don't know the price, we're looking for a price tag, what it would cost us, and to look at some avenues for grants or things like that, whatever we can do. So we definitely want to move forward. We've been waiting to see how this Board felt about it, but, because it's kind of been on a back burner for a while, but I'd love to bring it forward. It's something that's very, you know, needed very badly in this town. There was no indoor facilities at all in this town, and it's, you know, the youth groups all have to go out of town and pay, and we use, we use our school gyms, and they aren't really gyms, we use our cafeterias in most of the schools. And again, like we talked about before, between the boys and the girls, it costs us over $50,000 a year for custodian fees, which is, you know, unheard of, and it's getting higher and higher every year. So anything we can do to alleviate that? We've already got a plan, kind of a plan in place on how to run the facility and how we would pay for it. Like I said, the money that the boys and the girls just pay, just us alone, would, you know, would help out. So there's where we're at. We're hoping that you guys want to move this forward. Anybody else?
Members?
Looking in our packet, we have the proposal that was sent to, from, to Cody Hadad, who was the previous Assistant Town Administrator, from Joel Bargman from BHNA. And in there, it has a description of the facility, and then costs that they were proposing at the time, which was in 2022. Let me just get back to make sure.
March 22nd.
March 22nd, 2022. The basic design of the gym, it has figures here, 14, 14 million, 700,000, and then adding the program rooms, the track, and additional team rooms. I guess we're looking close to about 17 or 18 million dollars. And I'm not sure, like, we're a year out, so how much do we think that that, the estimate would be now?
We've estimated about 20 million. I will, I will say this, in talking with the vendors that replied to the procurement for the OPM, they had example facilities that they had done, and a number of them had come in lower than what they anticipated using this kind of same type of analysis, so we don't anticipate that it would come in over. But this is some of the things that will be hashed out as part of the design process. You heard Mr. Viera mention that we talk about using the facility as a meeting place for the town. It's also going to be a meeting place for a town meeting, but also an emergency shelter. We don't have one of those in place. So those are things that we evaluated and, you know, evaluate the costs associated with that as part of the design. But the design, you know, is certainly at its basics, is to provide indoor recreation facility to the town. So our hope is to do a design that, you know, can be a little bit à la carte, just like they've done here when they've proposed some estimated costs, so we hope to do the same thing.
My, my concern is, I'm not speaking for myself, because my comment is, does the town really have the stomach to pay that kind of, put that kind of money into a very well-deserved program, in my opinion, and badly needed for our town? But does the town have the stomach for it, to put that financial burden?
I, I can-
I, go ahead.
I can add a little bit to that. So as you're aware, we have a long-term capital planning committee that's been meeting regularly. Our, our goal is to show some of these projects and the tax impacts to the residents in town. And I can tell you, I think, you know, a project like this can be affordable to the community and provide much more benefit.
I think that's what they want to hear, yeah.
So when we get close to the long-term capital planning committee, it's got to meet to kind of decide what they want to present to the public, but I think our goal is to show that some of these projects are affordable when scheduled properly, so.
Great.
Would you introduce yourself, please?
Joe Viera, I'm just on the Park Board. I, I think, at this stage, I think we're all kind of looking for a direction. I think both Boards are looking for direction. So next logical thing would be to pick a project manager. There are a list of, how many, how many people applied for that?
We had, I don't know how many applied, we interviewed three.
Three of them. So of the three, I think that's the next logical thing to do, is get that person in place. That way we can start locking in some of these numbers, instead of just having this shotgun approach of figuring out what's what. Let's get the person in place. Let's agree on a project manager, meet with them, and start fine-tuning this project. Maybe it won't be that much, maybe it will, we won't know until we get these people in place. As far as what Mr. Mickelson asked about whether or not there's a stomach for it, I think having 1,000 people and being at those meetings from the elderly, from the Council on Asian folks who were there, who actually spoke in favor of it on top before they even wanted a new center. So if you put your feelers out there, you start- So, if you put your feelers out there, you start talking to people, start talking to different groups of people, they all know we need something like this in place for the town. We've been kicking this can down the road for close to twenty years. I know there's talk about private people, this, that, listen, it doesn't work. Everybody's good for forty-eight to fifty-yard dash. We're here right now with the ball, we're not like the Patriots, we're not going to fumble, we're here with the ball, we're on the goal line, we need that project manager like yesterday. So, I don't know what the procedure is, we can work this out, let's, we got the three names, let's pick a person, get this person in place, let's meet with them, maybe we have another meeting once that project manager is in place, and get started, instead of, we don't need to, no more procrastination, like, we've got to get moving on this. If we present it to the town, and the town says no, well, guess what, we've done our due diligence, we've done everything we can positively, we've asked everybody, we've spoken to people, allowed people to have input for a long time, generational input. But I think now's the time, we got to get moving on this, one way or the other. If not, this project will get kicked back further and further, and, you know, maybe my grandkids will be standing up here talking about the same thing, you know? We're all dead and buried, we got to get this thing moving, so that's my two cents. And I don't know, since it's a joint meeting, I don't know if it's a form of a motion to try to get these people picked, I don't know, Mr. McGinnis, that's your parliamentary procedure, but if it requires a motion from the combined board to say that we'll pick somebody or move forward, that I'll make that motion now, if it's necessary.
I think, well, I guess, well, someone can make a motion about whether or not to move forward with the procurement of the OPM. So, whether it's a Select Board member or the Park Board, I don't know how.
But we've already put the money aside for it.
Yes, the board voted last year to use ARPA funding to do the design, correct?
I have. Let's get this manager hired.
I have a, all right, all right, let me step back, okay? This is, so right now, we have a concept, we have a feasibility study. So, the next step would be to move forward on a design. So, we would need to hire an architect to design the work. We don't need a project manager at the moment, because there's no shovel in the ground.
We, we need an owner's project manager, which the state requires.
Same time before the, okay, all right, so as long as the state requirement. So, now this leads me to two questions. Number one, once the design has become, we have a design and a cost, how are we going to get the, how is it going to be funded, and in what form? And second, which is probably the most important, where's it going to go? Because nobody's talking about location.
Well.
And I think that's the most important part, we have a concept, we have a location. But we need to, we need to, we need to put it in the ground somewhere.
On the design plan itself, the DYA field in the back portion there, where they park the cars, is a section of property that was purchased many years ago by Michael Gagné, the farm that we, through CPC, sold the house off to pay for the land, so that land would be there. It abuts the back of now Dartmouth property, Eugene Maderas' property, it abuts that area there, it's the field that's back there, it's the upland that's there. If you go through the DYA parking lot, you go through that fenced area where it's parked, there's a field that's there, almost like a hay field. You've got Hickney's House to the left, behind Hickney's House to the left.
How much upland?
Oh, this is all upland there, it's the highest point all the way through. The wetlands, if you go back there, and if my memory serves me correct, behind the police station, where you used to have the gas pumps, if you go in, probably about fifty yards or so to the left, I believe the flags are still there from the wetlands, it goes down to the Cushman Brook, down to the end, but from that old oak tree that's there, I just.
So, how much, how much property is that, do you know?
Oh, I don't, I don't know.
Guess where, what do you think? I'm curious, I'm curious.
I could tell you in a minute, just give me.
So, Tim Lancaster, Director of Parks and Rec. So, many years ago, we actually hired an engineer that did a study on that location and actually designed a building the same size as the building that was used in the feasibility study, along with parking, and it fit in that field, in that open area. And it was case of standards, GAF Engineering did the design, did the site layout for us. The feasibility study was done, we picked, I believe, three locations for that gentleman to look at, one was that location, one was on Reed Road, and the third might have been, where was the third?
There were, he looked at, no, the property, the old police station site, but two locations on that site.
Right, yes. So, by purchasing the house, Gene's house, you actually lock in the availability, have a roadway between the DYA and the existing parking lot behind the old police station, which you could have a throughway or secondary access. That was not part of the, the thought process way back when GAF Engineering did that preliminary site plan for us, because none of that was in play at the time. We still have that plan, if anybody wants to see it, I'm sure I can dig that up and send it.
There are some options, obviously.
There are, so.
And Maderas property is, I'm correct, right, now that we own the old Maderas property.
We, the town owns it, the selectmen own that, that's correct, yeah.
So, that's, that's the key, in my opinion.
And, and the other key part of the whole project is, one, when we had the feasibility study, I think we looked at it, and it was a fancy building, somewhat fancy, that the gentleman used at that time. When we were, Mr. McGinnis and I were discussing options with the project managers, we saw that some of their buildings that they had built were a little bit more, you know, basic in design, and that's, that's an option. So, depending on where, where the town wants to go, that obviously affects costs drastically, going from a steel building to something that's, that's obviously very elaborate, with a lot of glass and things when you drive up, you know? There are two different ways to approach these things, so you got to remember that when you, architects love to design things that look good in their portfolio for the next job. So, you got to be able to make sure you compare that back if you want to get something that's within a budget, so that's to think about. The second thing I think you need to really think about is sustainability for the building. When you have a building the size of three basketball courts, you have a lot of roof footprint, and you have the ability to put a lot of solar panels to run things that can operate buildings. Jim Viera and I had talked to a gentleman that was running the, I think it was the tennis court building up on Route Six at the time, and that building was completely being run off the grid. So, those are things to keep in mind, because especially on a building, if you were to move forward on something like this, sustainability is key, because the folks using it, you don't want to have to put a huge burden on them using the building, because this is community-based usage of the facility. You want to handle janitorial and maintenance, like maintenance to the building, but, you know, energy costs are something you want to try to keep in tone, you can do that if you think sustainability when you construct the building. And that's key, and a building like that allows itself to, different options because of its large footprint of roof area. So, you might want to keep that in mind as well.
It'd be wide open for, for solar panels.
I'd like to, I don't think there's any question, there's a consensus at town that there's a need for this project, and I certainly feel the same way myself. However, we have made a commitment to this town that, rather recent, that, as far as I can tell in my career here, we've never looked at long-range planning the way we're trying to look at it now. Now, whether it be a new school, water treatment plant, or a new recreation center, we need to prioritize where this money is going to be spent. Is the money available, is the financing there? We're, our committee is in the process of identifying how we can pay for these, and I think that we can. But I think we're obligated to our residents to tell them that we need these projects, but we're going to prioritize them, and over the next thirty years, we're going to spend the money on places where it makes sense and we can afford it. And what's it going to cost us to do it, whether it be in water and sewer fees, or possible extra, extra taxes, whatever they may be. And I'd like to feel that we can coordinate this effort so that, as we go forward, but there's no turning back, if we hire a project manager, we're in, we're in for a million dollars. So, there's no turning back, once you say yes, find the project manager. But I think we have an obligation to look at this long range, and we have some really good people on this project, we meet again Wednesday. We're meeting regularly to try to get this process going. And we made a promise to a joint meeting of the school committee, the finance committee, this board, that we would come across for June Town Meeting with this kind of priority, how we're going to spend, what we're going to spend, what's the priority, and how we're going to pay for it. And I'm all in favor of hiring a project manager and get it going right away, but I also, I, I, there's just need to be, in my view, cautious, because we just can't look at any single project and stand alone and say that's the one that's necessary without looking at the total package.
Looking at the GIS map, so it's the land directly behind the parking lot that was purchased, I believe, in two thousand six. Yeah, I'm not, well, if you look at it through, it just says Town of Dartmouth. But that looks like that was purchased in two thousand six. But there's some land directly behind that, too, that's also owned by the town that was purchased back in nineteen eighty-one.
Correct, that's the wetland there.
That's right, there's, but there's still some upland now.
There are uplands there, but the lion's share, if you look out by that gas pump to the left, it's probably about a ten to fifteen-foot drop that goes down.
Right.
So, are we looking north, is that it?
Well, I mean, the parcel that was purchased in two thousand six is just under three acres. And then the larger parcel in the back that was purchased in eighty-one was about, I think it was like almost six acres. So, and it looks, from here, it looks like roughly sixty percent is upland. So, and that's directly in the middle, and it's directly at the end of the parcel that was purchased in two thousand six. So, it looks like the wetlands are more towards the back of the property and the parking lot of the police department, so.
I'd like to get a clarification, let's assume that we make a decision tonight. Let's assume we make a decision tonight that we're going to go forward and hire whoever we have to hire. Could you explain that process and timeline, how that would work, and how that commits the town to what we're going to do? Is that an unfair question?
No, so, we would identify the OPM, select the OPM, work on a contract with the OPM.
And their job specifically is?
They provide support, and once we have the OPM on board, then we will look at procuring the architect. They would help us through that process. So, then the next step after the OPM would be to bring on board an architect and get the design going. And the design, you know, then that's when we start to form a building committee and start to review, you know, the, to help select the architect, but also review options for the design.
And that, once we hire the OPM, that commits us to how much money?
It's hard to say, the cost of the OPM, I mean, it's really, once you bring the architect on board, that's when you start kind of committing funds.
So, the OPM and architect, we're talking about a.
But we've already put how much aside for that, through the ARPA funding?
One million one hundred ninety-two thousand.
I'm not as concerned about that as I am that, once we commit to that, we are in. Once we sign the contract to the OPM, and then we move along, we've committed a million dollars of the project.
I mean, yeah, in the end, I mean, if you get in the middle of the project and there's issues that you can certainly break the contract, but then you've just wasted.
I understand, okay, but that, so our decision tonight, if we decide to go forward, is committing us to this project. And, and if it doesn't work, there's problems, it's going to cost us to get out, but on the other hand, we're committed.
Yes, and I think you'll, you can see this in other communities, too, that are proposing facilities. You know, they'll go through the design process, now you've got the design done, and not unlike the Causeway, when that was done, that was a shovel-ready project, funding became available. So, a lot of times, if you have a kind of shovel-ready project, if funding becomes available, and we know, we talked about this with ARPA funding, so it needs to be expended by a certain date. You know, we talk about just in town here, making sure that we have our ducks in the road to spend that funding, but I have a feeling that there'll be funding available, because, you know, if the government doesn't take it back, it's going to be out there and available, and hopefully at the state level where they can, if they have a project that's shovel-ready, they can kind of donate, dedicate funds to that. So, having the design done helps the town, you know, in the short term and in the long term, if it's something that's not affordable right away, maybe down the road, five years, it becomes affordable, now you've got everything put together, you're just updating some numbers, so.
Any comments out here, anybody? Come on up, Joe.
No, we got one more.
Again, this has been as long as a project as I can remember. The difference, what I think this time here is, you know, it's different of all the projects that we do. We have the opportunity to have a facility where we can house our recreational facility, our in-town functions, we can kind of streamline what we do. Summertime, it's raining out, thunder, we have a place where we have our kids safe in one location. Also, this is almost like a public and private partnership, I think, if you're looking at it, because all of the youth groups are individual private groups, they're not funded by the town whatsoever. There's commitments from almost all of them to put money into this project for upkeep and maintenance and things of that sort. Plus, if it's done right, there may be a, I'll call it an office space, it could be a sporting goods place, it could be anything that would pay rent to help offset the cost of running this facility. I mean, those are things that we look at and say, we don't want, okay, let's just dip into taxpayers' pockets, it's not saying that, we're looking, we want to work, but I think we're working with the taxpayers, taxpayers are working with the, you know, the youth groups by putting that money in together, and I think it'll be, it'll be a pretty good marriage, I think, between the two, to do it. I mean, again, a thousand people who came forward at that time, since then, there's been more people talking about it, they see the need. You know, I, I think the opportunity, again, kicking the can down the road, everybody's project's important, school department, new school, they think that's important. Treatment plant is important, there's other things around here, there, everything's important. You know, we think that this is important, we're, this is a down payment on our generation of our children coming forward, and our seniors who are out there, who right now are walking the mall, they're walking the streets, they're doing all sorts of things they shouldn't be doing. We want to put them all in one place, where it's safe for them, where the, not only the younger kids can play sports, but we have young adults, eighteen to twenty-five, there's nothing for them to do, other than have, begin mischief. So, this is an opportunity where we have a vision of this place running, you know, the youth kids are gone, the older adults come in. First thing in the morning, we got the seniors and the early birds are out there doing their thing. So, we see, we have a vision that's going to incorporate the entire town, not just, I mean, we talk about youth, but it's not just the kids, we're talking about the eighty-year-old kids that are out there also, so that's all I wanted to say.
Anybody else? Anybody else in the audience, anybody?
Anybody, please.
Mary Tatro, the Park Board. So, the only, my concern is, I thought we already discussed this, and this was already a go. Like, we got the invitation to come today was, like, I thought, we had already said, yes, we're going to go ahead and do this, and this was already, you know, in process and going, and I didn't realize that now we're talking about approving, and I thought this was already approved.
Yeah, so I get, it's, the, the amount of money is significant. I know the Select Board approved the funding, so we went through the process, but I wanted the Select Board and the Park Board to be, to reinforce that commitment, so to speak, so that everyone's on the same page. I know sometimes with the ARPA funding, there were a number of projects, I didn't want it to get lost in the shuffle, so to speak, and then for the public maybe not to be aware of what's going on or when they hear about it, so I thought it was a, you know, then we've got a lot going on, so, through the summer. So, we wanted to take this opportunity to say, we've gone through the process, this is the final step, do we want to all move forward, are we all on the same page? I'm just looking for consensus.
I, I just thought it was already decided, that's all, I was, I was surprised.
I agree, it is like that, but I just want to, you know, like I said, it's a significant sum of money, so I want to make sure that everyone's kind of on the same page.
Okay.
And it, just clarify for me, it also went through town meeting, at the last town meeting, the ARPA funding?
No, the ARPA funding, the Select Board chooses the ARPA funding project, so it's not.
It was not discussed.
Not at town meeting, no.
Quickly say, I know we don't have to convince you about the need of this project, and that, that's not, you know, that's already, I can, you know, I know you know that that's, it's a need. I think what we're saying is, let's hire a project manager, so we know what the numbers are, so we can start looking at what the funding is going to be, where can we get the funding? How can we get the funding? Right now, we don't know anything. I mean, we're throwing around numbers of, you know, eighteen million, twenty million, we don't know. I mean, the design that we saw, we were like, we wanted to scale some of the back, so we'd like to see a design, get a price, let's see what grants are out there, like Sean says, is there any money available? You know, I mean, but if we just keep sitting on it, I mean, I got on this board maybe twelve years ago to try to get some kind of a community center, and I've been trying for twelve years, and we've all been trying. And this is the first opportunity we have to maybe move this forward. So, I'd like, you know, it's our request to please, if you guys vote to move it, at least move it forward, let's go to the next stage and see what happens. And as Sean said, if it's down the road, well, it's down the road, but at least at this point, we know, get some figures so we have some idea where we're going with this.
The one thing, the one thing I don't want to do is, I don't want to scale down the project because of cost, because that's been done on several buildings in here, okay? And, I mean, part of, part of it had to be, you know, the, the high school on Bakerville Road. I mean, initially, the auditorium was supposed to fit two thousand people, okay? But because the opponents, you know, put the kibosh and, and put a lot of legal entanglements on it, you know, we had to cut it back so that it would meet the cost, and to this day, it's, it's still something I'm a little upset about. But I don't want that to happen here. If we're saying, if we're saying, if we're going to say that we're going to do a building with three courts, two program rooms, two restrooms, two team rooms, and a running track, that's what we have. that's what we have to do. And not say, then all of a sudden, oh, wow, you know, gee whiz, look at the money, we can only afford two basketball courts. No, this is what we think the community needs, and that's the way it should be. So, I, that's the one thing that government is known for, is to make compromises so that it, when it finally, product comes out, it's not worth a damn. And people complain, oh, they should have made this bigger. That would be the first thing somebody said, I guarantee it, so.
Sean, you still grudging at high school?
There's a lot of things I have a grudge in at high school.
It's okay.
Oh, no, I don't, no, no, trust me.
I can respect that.
It's a burden, it's a burden on him.
If you saw the letters that came to my house, I'd be more than happy to show you.
We have a recommendation for anyone, or how do I want to proceed?
Make a motion that we proceed.
Great, that's a motion.
No, we need to have them hire, get involved in hiring a project manager.
Make a motion that we, that we proceed with the project and look for, and hire an OPM to start the process.
As previously approved.
Start the process.
Second.
That's my motion. Don't add to my motion. Don't do that.
Second.
Any comments or discussion on that motion? We ready to vote?
Yep.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
McDonald, yes.
Is that what I said?
McDonald.
Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, five zero going forward.
You got it.
Thank you very much.
All right.
You guys are going to be very active once we get this going, so we appreciate that. It's just the beginning.
Thanks for coming, guys.
Did I call you Mr. McDonald?
Nobody cares, okay.
No, I'm not, I'm not, well, I am scarred, but it's not.
Okay, Sean?
All right.
Next. I'm going to meet the chief, wait all this time, can we change it? I don't know. He's on the end, keep going. Emergency management officer resignation, Mr. Joe Viera, please step forward.
You retiring again, Joe?
That's what I just said before.
You've everything up.
Taste of retirement. You got a taste of retirement.
Yeah. Been good. Yeah, I submitted my letter. Stepped down. After a few years, I forget how many years, no, I don't even know. I replaced Eddie Pimento, he was a good man, did a good job. I've been fortunate over the time to have a great crew that worked with us, like great volunteers. We made some steps getting some new equipment for them. Great, during COVID, they were second to none, working with Chris Meeshowd and others on that, my clinics, we had people from out of town, even the professional people from the actual people that are doing it for profit up there, came down to take a look at it, so it's kind of a good feeling that they did a good job, a lot of people did a good job, worked out together, so. But, time has come. Actually, I think today or tomorrow is my one year official anniversary from the police department, so that means I really can't come back now. I think I got a year, actually, I got a day left, I can come, I can, I can sign up again, I got one more day left before I can sign up.
The chief just left.
The answer's no.
There's some open details out there, Joe.
Did my thing.
Did my opportunity to get rid of you, so we're going to take it.
Sheen, came onboard, I've worked with Tim, both in, you know, my police department and EMA for, I don't know, ten, twelve years, Tim, I forget, it's been like forever. Twenty years, all right, so it's been forever. We've worked together. Tim's been very active with us, he joined the EMA a little over a year ago, he's been active with us, well-qualified person. I think the world of him, I think he's going to do a great job, he'll probably do a better job than I did. I think anybody can, but again, I think it's just time to move on to something else, and...
Go to your retirement.
Yeah, I listen, I love the town, I like working for the town, you know, I bleed green, Dartmouth Indian, the whole thing, I got all of that, but there comes a time where you got to kind of step back a little bit and let the next group come onboard, you can't be here forever. You know, so, again, that's it, it's been great.
Terrific. We have a...
You can't go too far.
We have some, we have a certificate for you, Joe, from the Town of Dartmouth, official select board citation.
I thought it was from Alphabets.
It says yea.
Be it known that the Dartmouth Select Board hereby extends its congratulations to Joseph Viera. In recognition of your service as Director of Emergency Management, thank you for your selflessness and dedication to the Town of Dartmouth.
This is getting to be a habit.
It is getting to be a habit.
Thank you.
Mr. Sheen, you want to come forward?
Before we can do anything. Before we do anything, just Mr., before Mr. Sheen speaks, make a motion that we accept Mr. Viera's resignation with regret.
I guess we, somebody has, some...
Just trying to, trying to make it, trying to make it nice. Trying to make it sound nice, I don't want to say, you know, make a motion that, yeah, so happily accept his resignation, that doesn't quite go.
Gladly second.
Okay, second. Any comments on that motion? Okay.
Thank you, Joe, riding into the sunset.
Let's vote individually.
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Thank you, Joe, once again. Appreciate it. Mr. Sheen?
Good evening, members of the board, and Joseph, thank you for that endorsement, I very much appreciate it. Believe it or not, when Joe would come on campus at EMS Dartmouth, he was known as Officer Congeniality.
Really?
Really?
Is there more than one Joe Viera in the town?
I have been involved with public safety since nineteen seventy-four. My co-op's from Northeastern University, my hometown TV.
Where do you put all these awards?
The, the way I envision what, to build upon what Joe started, what Eddie Pimento started, is to have a synergistic approach with the public safety departments, the DPW, any entity of the town that is in crisis, that we work in concert for the betterment, for the safety, for the citizens, and for an outcome that produces a safe and secure way to deal with a crisis, very simply put.
Beautiful.
You have some remarkable credentials, my friend.
Thank you.
Very much so.
We appreciate your stepping forward.
Mr. Chairman? Make a motion to appoint Timothy Sheen as the Director of Emergency Management.
Gladly second that.
Any discussion on that motion? Let's vote. Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, unanimous, five zero. We appreciate your coming forward for us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Your credentials took up half our agenda here.
I don't think we had a hurricane while Joe was in charge, right?
No, they were too scared.
Wait a minute.
It's a pandemic, no hurricane.
He planned it that way.
We're going to go, thank you, fellows, we're going to go a little bit out of order. We're going to jump to F, which is the Historic Commission Letter of Interest from Bev Sylvia.
Yeah, here she is.
Thank you for waiting for us, please step forward.
My beach partner.
Good evening, board. So I wanted to take the time to thank you for looking at my letter of intent to join the historical board. My intent and hope is that with my lifelong time in Dartmouth, most of my life I've lived here, I've seen a lot of changes, you know? I can remember when you could park on State Road without that far. And with my time in the building department, so at that time, I worked closely with the historical board, all right, and also with the contractors and the homeowners. So, my intent and hope is that to serve the historical board and give my perspective in being able to take in everybody's point of view, homeowners, contractors, and the historical, and the intent of keeping Dartmouth, Dartmouth. So...
Great, well spoken.
You sure have made your mark on the Town of Dartmouth, by all means.
Thank you.
Motion to appoint.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any comments or questions before we vote? Let's vote, Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, five zero unanimous, and we appreciate your stepping forward for us.
All right, thank you so much.
Waiting for us.
Bye, Beth.
Okay, go back to, we're going to go back to E, the Capital Planning Committee Report on Proposed FTM Article Five Amendment.
Hello, Tari Ham, member of the Finance Committee, member of the Capital Committee, and Bruce Brooks is the chairperson of the Capital Committee. So we came tonight because Sean invited us to come and explain to you what the proposed amendment was. September eleventh, we met as capital, we were presented with a list of capital requests from department heads. Apparently, in the past, there were meetings with the department heads, but this year there were not. And during the discussion on the eleventh, some questions came up about priorities, and a request was made to schedule a follow-up meeting with department heads from school and from DPW, because those are the two biggest budgets. Select board voted on that on the eighteenth, the meeting, the follow-up meeting was not scheduled until the twenty-first. So we met on the twenty-first, Capital Committee met on the twenty-first, and after listening to the department heads, one, one point that I want to make is that there is a difference of opinion, I think it's fair to say, on what the agreement was with the school department after the budget shortfall last year. So, some of us remember that the routine providing technology to the school department was up for, you remember the meeting that we had on the twenty-fourth of April, the try, the try meeting? There was discussion then about not providing technology. I don't remember, and there were other people in the Finance Committee, as well as the Capital Committee, who don't remember there being a decision made that schools wouldn't receive any capital. So, the concern that we have, the concern that I have and other people on the committee have, is that the requests made by the school department are not frivolous, and, you know, were requested in August, but no follow-up meeting was held with them. They're requesting money to address roof replacement at the high school, which is leaking, which, you know, one of the examples given was that there's an actual gutter in the building directing water away, so there's very strong concerns about that. There were concerns with fire system upgrades that have been requested by the fire chief for several years, that keep getting put off and put off, and the feeling is, how long can you put those things off without there being a problem? And requests for technology, infrastructure improvements, not actual technology like, you know, Chromebooks and computers, but to replace something like this, to improve, the system that's in place can't be upgraded, it can't be, the software will not accommodate, and there's a concern about hacking vulnerability. So, at that meeting, and Bruce has been on the committee for a year, years and years and years, and I'm going to turn over the other part to him because he has a much better understanding of what's been going on with, I think it's fair to say that, do you want to come up and talk about that?
Yeah, over the, in the springtime, they ended up presenting just all the capital improvement requests, and it was presented to all the department heads so they could see everybody else's worries and woes of what's out there being asked for. At that point, there wasn't much discussion about what we were going to give them. It was already, it was already dictated, pretty much, of what the town felt they could afford. At that point, we actually requested another meeting and ended up, you know, proposing to have the garbage truck bought, since it's coming out of surplus, the sewer enterprise fund, you know, solid waste. So, those things got changed. Just because of the way the process was done, we were not able to do our due diligence, as far as I'm concerned, and I feel the same way was happening this time, and that's the reason why we really wanted to meet, and I'm glad we did, because we found out there's a heating system that's down at the DPW that actually has to keep the temperature for all the gaskets and the, all the pumps, so it never gets too cold and gets brittle and then destroys the pumps. They're in need of that. And you, and you look at, you know, the fire alarm system that has to be upgraded. I mean, everything that she just mentioned was not on, presented to us initially, you know, it was on the list on priorities, but the problem is, is that when they were, we were told the priorities didn't change, but they really did, because it was all dictated by ARPA money for all the top priorities. But they really needed the other items, but they weren't, you know, approached or asked about those, if those would be moved up, or how much of a need they really have. And here you have now that you must have been presented with a capital plan that wasn't fully vetted and fully done. Now we're in a dilemma of how the money can now be appropriated.
What's that number?
Two of these.
What is that number?
That was the reason for the proposed amendment, and in speaking to the moderator briefly today, she's out of town, so I couldn't talk with her at length, she is feeling that we can't make this proposal. I don't really understand why, I need to follow up on that, but the concern is now, because of the process that was in place, very disappointing to be in the position to have to say, we may not be able to do this work, which needs to be done. So, in explanation, that's where we came from, and that's why the Capital Committee made the decision that they did. The Finance Committee discussed it that night, and under the proposal, agreed with that. They didn't vote on it because it's not something that you would vote on, but they agreed with the concept of making an amendment from the floor. Any questions?
Yeah, what's the amounts, what's the amendment?
Well, you had, the bulk heating systems are a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the DPW, for the heating system. The roof replacement, it's not really replacement, it's actually repairs and try to keep it, keep it going until they can finally go to MSBCA or whatever, to get the funding for a new roof. That was two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Can I just interject? So the school department discussed this and agreed, you remember they have a kindergarten, full-day kindergarten fund that has, I think, around three hundred thousand. The school department voted last week to use that money for the roof.
Great.
They didn't have the money from their own budget for the other things.
That's great.
Sorry, Bruce.
Yes, that's fine, no, you know, I mean, and we, and we brought that up to them, you know, just to try to do this, you know, figure out this good faith, this whole five hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars from last year, however that came up, and we're not here to argue that point at all, we're here just to say, listen, we got them to actually come forward and say they would take that money out of the kindergarten fund, to actually, you know, pay for that. So you already had good faith moving forward, so why are we holding off by giving some of the free cash that we have available? Because now we're going to be falling backwards with the infrastructure, now you're going to be waiting at least an eight-month period before you actually propose that again, from now to June, and by the time they get the approval and actually spend it, we're falling behind again. We had been, every year, we keep giving them enough money just to try to keep everything caught up or equal of what they need, and now we're falling backwards. And what is the cost of it when you go another year? What is the cost of not giving them the money? Because when you don't give them the money, and then they come back next year, it's not going to be three hundred and ninety-five thousand, it's going to be four hundred and forty thousand dollars probably, because if you figure, you know, six to ten percent, I mean, you saw what the cost went with the stadium, and by the time you actually put it out there, you couldn't afford it.
Let me answer your question, Sean, the total proposed amendment was going to be one million four hundred and eighty thousand.
Okay, so what are the, what are the total items? What are the, what are the items that are part of this amendment?
The heating system that Bruce talked about, roof replacement, not really replacement, but patching.
Roof repair.
Fire system upgrade, multiple schools, that's from the fire chiefs have been asking that for a long time.
What's that, what's that figure?
That figure is $250,000.
Okay.
Technology, infrastructure, security and improvements, multiple schools, that's the, not the actual devices, I want to be clear, it's the system. That's $395,000. WPCF upgrade, no clue what that is.
That was with the sewer, and it was coming out of the sewer enterprise fund for that.
So that's $200,000.
And Tim needed that.
And then the truck that Bruce talked about earlier would be $260,000.
Okay.
And that would be coming out of solid waste.
So the amendment would read X number of dollars from free cash, X number of dollars from the kindergarten revolving fund, and X number of dollars from the solid waste fund.
Correct.
And water sewer.
So the money, the difference, the difference in those funds, so the money that's coming from free cash is what? And do we have it?
Yeah, we have, we have it.
$150,000.
Gary was at the meeting, so we have it. The question about the amendment is more around procedure.
$795,000 of, that would come out of free cash.
So what, all right, so if it's $795,000, and there's free cash that we have not used, how much of that, how much of free cash, yeah, how much free cash have we not used? We take the 795, and then what's the balance?
Go ahead. But the question is, we have that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have that available. We talked with the Capital Committee about putting aside money for capital projects that don't pan out, and also putting money aside to begin kind of long-term planning, not to make another fund, but just to plan on that.
So I can, I'll just go over briefly and try to tie in what both Bruce and Terry were talking about. So initially, when we met, we had certification of free cash of about 5.3 million, and out of that, we had proposed 1.5 million that you see in the article, that's proposed right now at town meeting. So that dropped us down to 4.1, say 3.8 million. So on top of that, the amendment would drop it down to another 1.4 million, but out of that, 330 would come out of the school kindergarten day fund, and then $200,000 would come out of the enterprise fund for water sewer. So that would leave an additional $950,000 that would draw down on the available balance for free cash. Now, keep in mind, we also-
The school committee voted 250.
Okay, they voted 250, so 250 would come out from the kindergarten, so they're not drawing down the complete kindergarten account. So I just want to keep everybody up to breast about, we talk about, we've had some discussion on a long-term capital planning fund that we could set aside in the spring, at Springtown meeting. We will need some of this free cash money to fund that. That's the source of funds to talk about long-term capital projects. And I think the CIPC is on board with that. Bruce had made a recommendation that we earmark a million dollars if some of these projects go over, and then another million dollars to put in that fund. So we've then essentially, basically, used all of the free cash, there might be a few hundred thousand dollars left at the Springtown meeting. So this is a different way of doing business, because in the past, we've used every single dollar of free cash to fund and do smaller projects, like you see in the capital requests. So we're trying to, trying to use as much free cash the best way we can, not only for short-term fixes, but also for long-term projects. That's where, that's where we stand. And in the worst case, if we can't do this amendment, and I know that some of it is priority, and we gotta keep in mind that, like Bruce mentioned, when we get these, when we get these requests from the departments, what may be a priority at the beginning of the year, is not, or what may not be, is now a priority, like the fire has been, was a priority seven, now it's a priority one, because the chief went by and looked through the schools. The heating system that Bruce had spoke about at the plant was, you know, on its way out, now it's completely broke. So now that's a priority. So these things are moving targets to the cost of a fiscal year.
I mean, I can understand putting money for the long-range planning after July 31st, June 30th, because then we know what our free cash position is, that's understandable. What I don't quite understand is, I know that any time a motion on financial, financial items come before town meeting, it's always been the moderator's method that you provide a funding source, that if you, if you take, if you make a motion to change, then you have to, you have to take it from somewhere, put it somewhere.
Right, right.
So we know where this money's coming from. So these additional items, we know that it's free cash, it's the kindergarten fund, and it's solid waste. I don't see why this amendment can't be. And to be perfectly honest with you, I don't have a problem putting that motion on the floor. Let town meeting vote it. And then at that point in time, if, you know, I know it's gonna go to the AG's office, the AG's office says that the motion wasn't viable, then let them tell us. So I don't have a problem doing that.
Yeah, we try to perfect this as much as we can, like Bruce mentioned, through the cost of the process.
My understanding right now is that Mr. Savistano has explained that it can't be taken. I don't understand it, so I need to follow up and-
I can provide clarification, I asked Anthony, Attorney Savistano, for some clarification. He said, "A floor motion to fund additional capital improvement items not identified in the warrant article would be, would be out of the scope of the article, and therefore not an allowable motion."
Okay, then my, you know, then my motion is this, that I call for a special town meeting in November to discuss this. Plain and simple, that's my motion right now.
So as a result of our experience, I know I'm gonna be recommending that we start our process sooner, and that we meet with at least DPW and schools, they're the two biggest budgets, and we need to get a handle on this.
I think we gotta, we have an immediate problem, what we can do with this town meeting, if anything, and then we have a solution to the problem, try to look at it down the road. Do we, do we have any choices for the town meeting to accomplish this?
Not for this town meeting, no.
Okay, so then my motion stands. Call for, call for a town meeting, emergency, a special town meeting for sometime third week in November.
So just to kind of clarify some things, so this board, the Finance Committee, the school committee, agreed last spring that we had a budget deficit of $588,000.
We had, that's true.
You asked Gary and I to meet with Mr. Kylie to come over, to come up with some options to bridge this gap for this fiscal year we're in. We came back, we took the funds that were allocated for short-term borrowing, and applied them to the school, with the understanding that the school gets funded for their capital through turnbacks from the municipal budget. I submitted a memo to the Select Board stating that the school was going to forego that funding for this fiscal year for capital items. It was in the budget message that was in the town meeting packet, that the school was gonna forego that capital funding. And it was voted on, and it was also presented, it was presented to the Finance Committee and the Select Board. So I'm just saying, that's what the board voted in the spring, is that how they wanted to proceed with the budget process.
That's the case, I don't know why the school department didn't know about it. So I think, and neither do I.
I mean, we have it all documented, I don't know why they wouldn't know about it, or if they maybe just didn't remember.
That's what I mean, but there's a difference.
Okay, but I can understand that point, but right now, we have a leaky roof, and we have a leaky roof in the high school that needs to be repaired.
We need a new furnace, too.
And, you know, I'm not, I'm talking about the DPW thing. This is strictly schools. And we also have a situation where, for some reason, these fire, you know, these fire recommendations by the, by the fire chief has been put off from years to years to years. And I'll be honest with you, I want to know why. Why, why has that recommendation been put off for years, when it's a safety issue that should have been in the forefront? So that's, to me, that's on the school committee for deprioritizing that effect. And that should not be deprioritized. So now we have an opportunity where we need to correct it. And, you know, I understand the school, we had this agreement, and maybe the school committee forgot about it, or somebody, or they're playing Mickey the Dunce and don't want to realize that that's what it was? Okay, well, you know something? It's gonna come to roost when it comes time for the budget next year, okay? Because we're gonna be hard, fast, and hold it to them, to what they're gonna do. They're not gonna get the extra money that they want, plain and simple. And, you know, but-
I would, I would, I would ask the question, and I don't, I don't profess to be, to understand the rules, but is there, is there a way to ask the question through Savistano? Is there some way to get this on the, in some form, on the next, on the October town meeting? Is there anything we can do to make this work, period?
There's, no, not in this, not in the time schedule that's required by the bylaw.
Everything the town meeting members received their packet today.
So that, there's no option for this town meeting?
No.
Okay.
So-
The solution to that may be a special town meeting, but I saw that, okay, and we probably need to make a decision on that tonight?
No.
Okay.
Well, I mean, you need two weeks, you need two weeks for any kind of material to go before town meeting. So right away, there's your two weeks, and then you need two weeks to vet and go through this whole process, again, through this.
Can I just make a suggestion? Maybe if we do have a special town meeting, maybe, maybe we don't want to rush into a next, a special town meeting, maybe we want to have something like, maybe end of November, maybe beginning of December, that we can then meet with the department heads and really ask them, can we, can, can we go another, because, can we go another six months? I get that, the ancillary system and all that, and the fire, that's a, that's a priority. And it's being pushed by the fire district, so that's a priority.
We could consider a Zoom town meeting for that as well.
Yeah, and do we, do we look at maybe, can we, can we wait for another four months for the roofing, and tell the schools, okay, well, you know, in the, in the spring, we're gonna give you that roof, and we're gonna give you the repair on that roof? That's, that's the question.
But what about the heating system for?
How many on the, how many on these are true priorities? That's what, that's what I'm getting at. Can they, can they be, can they wait? Heat may not.
Till June?
Heat may not, heat may not wait, but-
May not wait.
Maybe, maybe the fire, I mean, the fire can probably wait, so I would say that, let's, let us meet with the departments again and ask them, you know, instead of rushing into another town meeting in the beginning of November, or we have one end of November, beginning of December. That would be my suggestion.
I think we have to get some discussion. My frustration is that on September 18th, when we voted on this, I specifically asked that night, that, stating that there were departments that were, had other requests that I had heard from, and they weren't included. So I was balking at voting on this warrant item number five. And I was told that night that we could make an amendment. And now we're hearing now, we cannot make an amendment. And so I'm upset that more time wasn't given to that, that we did not, as a select board, and so I'm gonna say, I am remiss, I own this, did not demand that we set a meeting for the following week before the deadline for this printing. I know we couldn't meet on the Monday because it was a Jewish holiday, but I should have demanded that we meet any of the other four days of that week. Because this is a bad look. It's a bad look that we have two departments that, and I will say separately, it's a bad look that if we do not fund a heating system for the DPW, and the system proverbially, bleep this, shits the bed, it's gonna cost us a lot more money than what they're asking for, for the heating system. That's one. The separate thing is, I understand that there was an agreement or a statement made that we did not want to give the school department more money. They're coming back and saying, we have a kindergarten revolving account that we're not using, that is money sitting there. I agree with Gary, go to them and say, of your priorities, knowing you have that money set aside, which is the one thing that we're gonna fund out of that?
Do they need town meeting permission to draw from that fund for any, for the repairs of the roof? Do they need that?
Two-thirds, yeah.
Because it's set up as a stable, is it? Like, need two-thirds of them?
I just wanted to know, I just want to make that clear.
So how much is, would you say the furnace was? Hundred thousand?
The furnace, $150,000.
I have, I thought-
Is it a commercial furnace, gas?
They're, no, they're oil, that's oil out there right now. They are, they are looking at other options at this point. And so that's, he wanted, he needed to get, I to get this back up and running, just-
See, out of the 1.4-
Or do we tell them to run their budget in the red?
Well, out of the 1.4 million, if you look at this in the aggregate, out of the 1.4 million, and this is only, this is only my professional opinion, I think that the heating system is, is key. The fire system to the schools is key, because that's been, that's been going on for a while. And the roof replacement. So if you look at the technology, the upgrade evaluation, and the roll-off of the truck, those may not be as much of a priority that could handle, that could be put into the Springtown meeting.
You can confirm that.
Right, and so the one, these are, these are necessities, and they, they should have been done this year, but I would say that out of the 1.4 million, the top three are the ones that really need to be focused on.
Can't we use the rainy day fund?
We have half a million in that account, so that would have to be something that's unforeseen, and-
Wasn't that furnace unforeseen?
You could see, you could say that the furnace is unforeseen.
Why don't we do that?
You know, that's-
Can't?
So that, that's what I'm getting at, the 1.4 million may not be-
Can we, those three items? Okay, I understand the, the heat is unforeseen because it broke down. That can go before the Finance Committee for a reserve replacement, and then in the spring, we can return that money to the reserve, to the reserve replacement. Now, the-
That's all general finance, correct.
Okay. The next one is the roof replacement, okay? It's a leak, unforeseen. That can be, that can be done, that can be done through a reserve from the Finance Committee, and then we can replace that money in the spring from the kindergarten fund back to the reserve. The fire suppressed, the fire system. If we can get a letter from, is-
We got a, we got a letter.
We got a letter from the, which, which-
Fire District.
Which, which district?
Two.
Two, okay. All right, that fire district, all right, that fire, does it give a timeframe when it needs to be done?
They, quite honestly, they've been getting this, they've been, so this was a priority seven, now it's a priority one.
But I'm just, I'm just saying that if we get a letter from the fire district, from the chief of the fire district, saying that the school department is going to be in default or whatever, blah, 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 whatever language they've, fire department wants to use, if the system doesn't, if these systems are not in place by, give them 120 days. Now, all of a sudden, we have an unanticipated, that can come from the transfer from the reserve, which can be replaced in the springtime.
That'd be, that'd be too much from the reserve, that we only have $500,000. So the first two, the first two we could do.
For some reason, I always thought it was like 790, but-
No, the first two we could do.
Okay.
The, what I would suggest to do with the fire ancillary systems, what I would suggest to do is that we get a letter from the chief saying that we will correct this, an agreement with the district, that we will correct this in the June, June town meeting with a, with a contribution to the capital. That's, that's a suggestion I would make, that that way they know that in June, or in the fall, in the Springtown meeting, that this will be corrected. And I think that maybe that will fly with the, with the, with the district.
Okay, that could possibly fly with them, but more so, I'm still, I'm still, I'm still also, why has this taken so damn long?
But I think, too, we need to say to the school department, why has this not been-
That's not the total amount that it's gonna be.
Right.
That's only a contribution.
It's only a contribution, but, but I think an agreement with the, with the district, and just to let them know that, okay, we've, all the boards have agreed that this will be corrected in the spring, in the spring, I think that might be, if it's gone years, another five months for a correction, I think is, I think that's maybe something they can-
So my suggestion would be to have the, the two items, other than the fire, that's the top three, go through the Finance Committee, go through a reserve replacement, and then, or reserve transfer, and then with that, telling the Finance Committee that we will replace those funds through the kindergarten thing, you know, yeah, through the kindergarten revolving fund, and from, and from free cash.
So, I mean, in essence, we could have, we potentially would have enough money to do those, but I would suggest that we talk, maybe talk to the district on this, if it's, if it's gone, if it's now a priority one, but it's been a priority seven for the last five years.
If you can get that to, if you can get that letter to us before the next meeting, then I'll-
Well, I have a meeting with the districts, all three of them, Tuesday, not this Tuesday, a week from this Tuesday.
Hmm.
And it might not be enough time.
And I'll work with the Finance Committee.
But I got a question about this furnace thing, yeah. So you said it's oil. Oil's furnaces are not very efficient.
They knew it wasn't efficient?
Right, right.
They know, and they had been looking into this, but now it just died.
I understand that, but if they could trans, if they have, they must have gas, natural gas there.
Not necessarily.
Well, can we find that out? Because you can, but you can buy 97, 98% fuel-efficient gas boilers today, and, and that would be a-
Yeah, I don't think they have it out there.
They don't have it? Yeah.
That's too bad, because oil is less than efficient, unfortunately.
So just to recap, I'll work with the Finance Committee, and Bob, to, to bring this on their agenda, so that it's on their radar, for the first two, at least for the heating system and the roof replacement, and we can, we can use that in combination with talking about what'll happen at the Springtown meeting, potentially happen at the Springtown meeting.
I'd like to see this on our next agenda with-
October 16th.
With a, with, with what's gonna happen, how everything is gonna be dealt with, immediately and in the future. That's what I want to see. That's what I want to see.
Yeah, we're going to have to have a meeting with the finance committee.
Okay, great.
It, it sounds like the heating system is the absolute number one priority. It has to be done ASAP.
Machinery can break down, really. Can't take a chance.
For a while, but, and it has to be done, but the heating system. Any comments, Mr. McGinnis, any comment?
No, we'll come up with the funding mechanism for the items identified.
And I, as far as the alarm system goes, you'd like to think we can do that sooner than later, rather than wait till June because it's.
You mean the fire alarm?
Yeah.
But I don't know that we know it's a fire alarm. Is it the alarm or is it?
Fire system upgrade.
It's an upgrade. So it could be an alarm, it could be bells, it could be sprinkler system, it could be almost anything.
It could be the whole panel, so.
That's not, that's not the only, there's going to be more than this.
It's, trust me, for that, for all the school systems and I know that's not the money, I know that's not what it is, because I know what it's like to replace an entire fire system in a building. And trust me.
The way you'll report.
It's not that kind of money.
This is probably just to make the district, in compliance with the district right now.
You're going to prioritize these issues. Number one on top of the list is the heater, and then you'll prioritize the other ones.
We'll talk to the finance committee about funding source.
We need to vote on this at all? Any other comments from anybody?
I just want to say one thing about the planning process. I think the conversation, the conversation illustrates the need for long-term planning that we have in place. Very important.
Did you repeat that, Terry?
Conversation today illustrates the need for long-term planning, which is in place. But I also think it's important to emphasize that we're one town, that it's not the school system over there getting money or not getting money. It's not DPW. I think whatever we can do to improve communication and the, the finance committee has liaisons to all the boards. We do what we can. I think the decisions about how much money they can have or can't have need to come from select board recommendations from finance committee, not from administration. And that, that would be my concern. I think that that needs to be tightened up, that process needs to be tightened up.
We have some work to do there.
Yeah, that's it.
Thanks for coming forward.
And that cabin chassis alone, you know, it was coming out of solid waste fund, so it wasn't really coming out of the town's coffers at that point. And it's $260,000. Now, we're going to be waiting at least eight months before he even thinks about ordering it. What do you think it's going to cost when he finally gets it? And that's, that's a waste of money as far as I'm concerned. The interest rate you're getting for that money will never cover that.
The UAW is on strike, so they're not building anything right now.
Oh, yes, Frank.
Frank, yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I would like to second, I would like to second the motion that Mr. McDonald made about having a special town meeting, because that'll allow us to sort out all the details in enough time.
Frank, I'm going to pull, I'm going to pull that until the next, hold off until the next meeting. So that, once we get a report from what these things are, whether or not we're going to need it or not. Because I know a special town meeting, especially close to Christmas, is not really well-attended. Trust me, I've seen it try to happen before. So I appreciate the second, but I think I'm going to hold off, I'm going to withdraw my motion and keep it in abeyance until the next meeting. If we need.
So the next meeting, we're going to get a report on these priorities and signing these dollars and we'll go from there.
Yeah, I'll call for, we'll call for a meeting of the finance committee on the 12th, so we can discuss the two items for the reserve fund. Let them know that we're looking that, it's, these are unforeseen circumstances. And then potentially, those will be the two funding sources for that. And then we can also talk to the, to the district about maybe what we can do about doing something in the spring maybe for the alarms.
I also want to make sure that we, each of us and each of those departments and the people who sit on those boards get a hard copy sent or whatever on what are the dates, what are the hard and fast dates, because we were very clear that we were going to run out of time if we took, held off the meeting till today, held off any vote. And I know that the town meeting members need to get this in advance. I opened mine, as you all heard me, tonight, sitting here, but I know that some people unfortunately don't open their packet until the day of town meeting. And I hope that everyone listening.
That's not fair.
Opens it. I know, but how many times have we sat in town meeting and heard that shh sound? So I think it's important that people who have received it start reading it, start thinking about how they're voting. And we need, I, and I again, will fall on my sword. I need to know, put that in my datebook. What are those drop-dead dates?
I'll only add to that. The town clerk has published a calendar that's way in advance, but there's a lot of technical issues involved and then a lot of surprises on top of that. And we just need to do a better job, pay more attention. And I still agree with Terry very much, so that long-term planning is going to button this all together because it's going to look at the big, big picture and then funnel down to the small picture. And that's what we need to do.
Right, but some of these weren't even surprises.
Yep.
Just really going through the process in a timely fashion or appropriate timeline.
Yep.
And I, I know Gary just started doing this, you know, in the springtime. I know that was a difficult time to come across something. You have an idea what the free cash is going to be. You don't always have it approved, you know, at that certified, but you have an idea. So there's no reason why we can't be planning sooner than later.
Very good. Okay.
I want to thank you for putting this on the agenda. It's nice seeing you all.
Thanks for coming forward. Okay, we're going to skip down to letter K. We're going to talk, we're going to call on esteemed police chief. Please to discuss the deputy police chief contract. Thanks for waiting for us.
Mr. Chairman, I had submitted through the town administrator, the current deputy chief's contract. And I'm looking for approval on that to be transferred over to the newest deputy chief, Victor Morenci. There'd be a 10-month window that that would cover for him to allow him some time to then begin negotiations on his next contract.
Motion to approve as submitted.
Motion to approve. I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second emotion. Any discussions, questions, or comments?
We know, and we know the reason for the 10 months is to make sure that everybody's on the same contract. Deputy Chief Vincent, their contract will run concurrent, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Answer questions before we vote. Anybody?
Make a comment when you vote, so call me last.
Will do. Are we ready to vote? Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Mr. Mickelson?
So, chief, we've had a great relationship over the years and I totally respect you. And I don't want to be the lone person to vote against this contract. I want this to be a unanimous decision to make sure that we continue to back you 100%. I'm not happy with the numbers, be that may, be that may, but I will vote in favor of it.
Thank you.
The vote is in unanimous, 5-0. Congratulations, Deputy Chief Morenci. And thank you for your work you did on this, chief. And you put a lot of time and effort to make sure that you were 100% behind what you decided to put forth to us. Thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Thank you. Have a good night. I appreciate you moving that up on the agenda.
Carry yourself.
We'll move back up to letter G, which is town hall customer service survey review.
Yes, so Select Board Brooks, Select Board Member Brooks and the Assistant Town Administrator, Chris Vitale, worked together to create an online customer service survey for a town hall in the departments. It was a little bit comprehensive survey, but probably took five minutes to fill out. And it's been up for a little over two months and we've had 21 responses to the survey. You can see the survey results in your packet. So generally, I would say they're positive responses. There are some negative responses.
I'd say so.
I'm happy to go over it.
Some are not surprises. We knew that folks were going to talk about beach stickers.
What about the beach stickers?
Well, I think the, the information that I've gleaned and looked through this for any department, I'll just say that, for any department. I think it's good information for the department head, the leader of that department, to look at this information as a point of reference and to look not as, I will say this, most of these, the surveys are positive. Where people have said we are lacking, I think we look at what they have given us to, and we think about now. Sometimes everyone can have a bad day. I think that by putting this information into the department head's hands, we're looking at them to make decisions of, is this a, a bad day or is this a permanent mood?
Systemic.
Yeah, and I think when you look at that, you know, there are some things, and I, not to pick on Parks and Rec, but we knew beach stickers were an issue. We saw it all over social media. Some people even offer suggestions within the document, within their survey, about having some more in-person time or some other options. And I think that gives Parks and Rec and Mr. Lancaster an opportunity to reflect on that information and say, okay, how can we do it? Or now that people have had a year to set their account up, which you do online, will it be that much easier for them to complete the process next year? So that's, you know, one example. I think it's just helpful, although some, some, it says anonymous, but there are some people that have provided their information because they do want to call back. But I think it's, it's helpful, even when, you know, we, we ask right on the survey if you have a commendation for someone, and some people give a great shout out. And it's nice for people to get recognized for doing it. It was nice for the gentleman here tonight to say this process was great. Now, I have a feeling he never filled in a survey, but that's great to hear because there's a lot of folks that go above and beyond. And we want to know who they are and we want to celebrate them. And we want, we really are a customer service business. And we need to look at this and say, okay, what is getting in the way? Is it technology? Is it personnel? Is it the hours that we're open? What, what is it? And I think this gives us a tool to look at it and say, you know, what is it? What can we do better? That's my piece. Mr. McGinnis?
Thank you. Anybody else?
Well, I agree with you, but there are some glaring remarks by, by residents, especially with the building department. And they're, they're the ones that took more flak than anyone. And I'd like to know what's going on in that department. And I think we need to get the building inspector in the building here and come before us and answer some of those questions.
I'd like to have him, I think this is an opportunity for Mr. McGinnis to meet with the department heads and to review this data. And then I do think that.
Let's get him in and find out what's the story.
I can tell you, I've met with the departments involved in all the survey responses, just to talk about them. I've met with the building department. You know, some of them are legitimate, others, you know, there's two sides to the story.
Yeah, we know that. There's three sides to every story.
We take that into consideration. So the ones that were legitimate, we dealt with immediately. And the others, you know, we, we take them seriously, but we, you know, look at them in the whole context.
We shouldn't have to do this. This should not have come up that way. But we have to call people back and straighten things out with some of the things I've read. Should have been addressed right away in a timely manner and courteously, and they were not done that way. And that's, that's, that's uniform throughout the entire department.
So I.
Now, I've got tons of phone calls about that department for the last six months.
Okay, well, I've not heard a lot, but, you know, that's a tough department. They do have to deal with, you know, a lot of policy and state building code issues.
Been out of the kitchen if you can't stand the heat.
Well, I think they, they do their best under the circumstances, but we, we do talk about this. The outcome of this total survey is that, you know, I've been working with Denise, our HR director, to coordinate some customer service training for the staff. So we've lined up some classes that we'll probably be starting to implement over the late fall or early winter. So I think it's.
Maybe the building inspector needs some classes too.
I think that we, we implemented this at the town hall and it's only been up since.
Two months, so.
Like, yeah, August, September. But I do think to continue looking at this and then expanding it beyond the walls of the town hall to other town departments. And I think that it, it helps. I will commend Chris Vitale. Soon as he came on board, this was one of the tasks that, that had been presented to him. And if you take the online survey, as you go through it and you say which department you interfaced with, it then goes down until all the possible things that you could have touched on in that department. It really is very comprehensive and I commend him for doing that. The paper version is a little less, only because it, once you check off, it doesn't go that, to that level of detail, but most people are looking at, are doing the online survey. And.
Are we satisfied at this point that we can leave it as it is and, you know, just keep trying it and then maybe refine it down the road? It's fine as it is, the format? The kinds of questions we're asking?
I think the only negative that I've heard is that when they're typing in, if they have something to say, there's, it's bound by so many characters. And so some people who are verbose are frustrated because they have more to say. So that's certainly something that we can, we can look at with Chris.
But for the time being, we'll let it go and see how it goes.
I, I think so. I think, I mean, it's, when you're going through them, it seems like there's a lot of questions. But as you're answering, as you're filling it in, I don't feel that as the patron.
Well, it speaks about the whole business of online programs. It's, they're so, they have to be so tailored to these different specific, I mean, the billing department versus the, versus the park department, beach sticker is.
Versus the clerk. It's, yes. And he's put, he's put in that level of detail, so that's nice.
It's a great tool.
And I, I think as we all get phone calls and emails from people, we, we learn quickly that there are a minimum of two sides to every story.
A minimum.
A minimum. And it's up to us to investigate all those sides before we make any, any unfair conclusions. But on the other hand, taking action is really important. Anybody else?
I mean, just looking at the survey, the, the departments that come out excellent, come out very good is the tax collector's office. And it's a tax, it's actually, it's a tax collector's office.
Well, Gary has access to change.
Stand up, Gary.
I mean, there looks like there's five surveys and everything, four of them are excellent in just all the comments. One of them was very good. So, I mean, you know, I, I, I think if, if there's one issue that would be, would be somebody paying, you know, giving up their hard-earned money and they'd be not being happy about it, but they, you know.
They love Gary.
The services is there.
Gary gave them discounts.
The departments that.
That's why we have the shortfall.
I mean, the departments that come, I mean, the park department come out because of the beach stickers and, and the way it was done. So I think now is the time to address that because there are no more beach stickers being given out and they're going to start drawing out. So maybe at some point in time, you start doing it earlier. You know.
There were suggestions, and I do think this gives them an opportunity to reflect on, how was it done this year? How can we better serve it next year? But I will say, they had thousands of beach stickers.
Yeah, there's close to 5,000 beach stickers.
And we just have to pray that they're not all going on the same day because.
Right, exactly, because there's no room.
There's no space for them.
You know, and the only other two departments that really don't look good in this is the town clerk's office and the building department.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, you gotta, I mean, it's a tool, this is the reason why this tool was done, to figure out, you know, you know. I know when people come into town hall, they're not going to be very happy with a lot of things. And, you know, you hear a lot of horror stories of some of the things that are going on, especially when we get the phone calls. And then you find out it's something entirely a little bit different, but then again, there's a lot of truth in what they're saying. So, but you know, I think this is, this is basically a wake-up call.
And I will, most importantly, hats off to Mrs. Brooks for initiating this whole process, and it's come along great, and it's going to only get better as we go forward. Thank you.
Welcome.
Next, anybody else on that one? Is it Robert Mohwald? Reappointment to the Veterans Advisory Board, Mr. McGinnis?
Yes, so we have a reappointment of Robert Mohwald to the Veterans Advisory Board.
Okay.
Motion to appoint.
Second. Okay. Any discussion on this?
A reappoint, sorry.
Reappoint?
Yep.
Okay. Let's vote. Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, five zero. Thank you, Robert, for stepping forward. Looking forward to your service. Next would be FEMA National Emergency Alert Test Notification.
Yes, so just to make this public and get the word out, so FEMA will be conducting an emergency alert test on October 4th. This is a nationwide test of the emergency alert system, which is television and radio, and also the wireless emergency alerts, which go through cellular devices. They're scheduled to begin approximately 2:20 PM on Wednesday, October 4th, so we just want the public to know that it is just a test. There's nothing they need to do, and they just need to know that when it happens, it's a test. It shouldn't last more than 30 minutes. Mostly people on cell phones will get a text just saying, this is a test of their wireless system. No action is needed, so.
Can we send...
I can see it already.
I know we can put it on the town bulletin board, those rotating bulletin boards.
Yeah, can we put it on the outside?
Yeah.
This is only a test.
I think we have that scheduled to go outside.
This is a test, and only a test. The aliens haven't landed.
Because I can see it coming. I can see it coming. It's gonna, it's going to happen. There's going to be at least a thousand, did anybody get the, what's going, no, there's no aliens, yeah, there's no aliens attacking.
Please call Sean McDonald for next one.
Is it worth doing...
I'll give his private number.
Worth doing a reverse 911 to the townspeople to let them know that this will happen?
I don't think so. It's pretty, I mean, when it goes on the TV, it says it's a test, and I think they'll get it.
You have to sign up for that, by the way.
Oh, all right.
Put it on the board.
Not everybody signs up for it. In fact, I would probably like to know how many people in town do have it signed up for.
This is a test.
Yeah, only a test.
You're flunked.
You know, and generally, those tests come around when you're watching your favorite show, if something's going to happen and all of a sudden, you get this and then, what happened? And you can't rewind the DVR because then you get the test all over again.
Sad story. Very sad story.
You've got a tough life, Sean, really.
First world problem.
If it's okay with you, I'm going to move on to the next. Anybody else?
Oh, no, let's talk about the test all the time.
Town Board and Committee Meeting Dates Review.
Yes, so at a previous meeting, the Select Board had asked for a list of the committees and their meeting dates throughout the past year. So Amy Imbo in my office had gone through and done some research on the website, which is our official posting site per the state, and listed all of the boards and committees that had meetings and had posted agendas for those meetings, so.
Great job. I mean, it's, I mean, let's put it this way, you know, Board of Appeals, Board of Assessors, Board of Health, you know, this is, this is fine. Board of Registitors, Voters, I mean, you know, one time, they don't meet that often. And they, that's, that's consistent history. Bristol County Advisory Board, God forbid them. The Soil Board, I know, is only, only when it comes up.
Once a year.
Yep, when they, and it's only permitted time. The Ag, CTV Conservation Council. The Council on Aging, three meetings, they should be meeting every month. Building Committee, Housing Authority, Middle School, Pathways, Tree just started up. Waterways, three meetings for Waterways, they should be able to do more.
Not enough.
Fire District, yeah. Well, thanks for the Fire District, that's nice to know. They do meet on a regular basis.
I think it's good information.
I would ask for a volunteer. There are a handful of meetings here, organizations that should be meeting more often than not. I'd have a volunteer to go through and maybe take a shot at listing those particular meetings and maybe bring it to our meeting next week, and we could maybe notify these committees that it seems that you're not meeting enough or something like that. Can I nominate somebody or someone step forward to do it for us?
It's just easy, just the two, the two that I just mentioned.
Well...
Council on Aging and the Waterways.
There may be more.
I'm looking at it, and I don't, to be honest with you...
Would you provide that list for us the next meeting, Ms. McDonald?
I just did.
There you go. Enough is enough.
Add the Youth Commission.
Would you take one more look, official look for us?
I just did, and I looked at this before.
Okay.
Those are the three that stand out to me the most.
One more looksee?
No, no.
Do you want to put it right in?
I mean, no, you don't need to. I mean, David, come on, I just gave it to you.
Let's move along, guys.
We think, well, I'm just gonna...
Sean just wrote it down. I mean, do I really, I mean, you know, Open Space Recreational Planning Steering Committee? Eh, no.
My guess is there's two or three more in there.
Well, then, you add it.
You add them on.
If you have a concern for it, you add it. I mean, this is, this is...
You're the one that asked for this list.
I know, and I'm, I'm happy with the three that I gave you. You want to add them more? It's your prerogative.
Okay, so...
Add more.
Boys, let's go.
At the next meeting, if anybody wants to add to this list, we're going to send a letter, vote on a letter to send out to these committees. We have three on there already. If you want to add to it, please say so for next meeting.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
What was the third? Waterways, Youth?
Waterways.
And Ag?
Youth Commission.
Council on Aging, Dartmouth Waterways Committee.
Yeah, and the Youth Commission.
And the Youth Commission.
And we'll put a letter together next week, next meeting, and any other additions that we might see in the list. Thank you.
I don't think we need a letter. I think a simple email to the department head is, why haven't you met?
Well, that's a letter.
Simple enough. Why haven't you met? Why only three times during the course of a year? We're already nine months into the year. Why not, why just three? You're meeting every quarter? Okay, I understand. Everybody else meets once a month, twice a month? Why are you meeting only one every three months?
Okay, we're going to send out those three, email to those three committees.
Don't overthink it.
Well, it's a big list. Next, let it use it.
Don't overthink it.
Next would be Town Administrator Update.
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis.
So, first off, we've been working with the state internally with our public safety departments on monitoring the governor's migrant, state migrant crisis, being prepared for that. We meet internally to be prepared, but we're seeing what's going on in other communities, and we're making sure Dartmouth's prepared if there's any migrants, migrants that are placed in town, as today there have not been, that we're aware of.
They have secured housing for them, if necessary.
Yes, the state coordinates all the housing and services for the migrants when they are placed in communities and works with the school departments in those communities. So the state coordinates all of that. There was some questions a few weeks ago about bombs detonating at the Woodcock Road firing range. The Chief Leveque looked into it. It turned out it was the State Police Bomb Squad exploding ordinances that had been found that needed to be exploded. Their policy is to notify residents prior to detonation. They did not do that this time.
Shocking.
Yes, so they, you know, Chief Leveque was in contact with the State Police, and they do have a, now, moving forward, they will make every effort to communicate to the public. They have a reverse 911 vendor that they use through the sheriff's office, but residents need to apply to be on that. We will post the link to that site for Dartmouth residents on our website that will go out on social media. We'll do that tomorrow. And we'll also try to advertise as much as, once we are notified in town, we will get the word out the best we can as well, so, but the State Police have indicated they'll make more of an effort.
From my understanding, District Two is also notified of what's going on over there too, correct?
Yes, District Two, Fire District Two, correct.
We need to bring them into the loop also so that they do the proper notification because right across the street's a 98-year-old lady who just, like, yeah, you know, it's not fair, you know? And I'm getting complaints from the guy who lives in that house that he's replaced, you know, he's replaced his windows in his house, and the only windows that have been replaced are the ones facing the gun range. So...
It is a gun range.
Not from, not from bullets, but just the shock.
Right. It is a gun range, it's like the...
Right, it is, it is a gun range.
If you buy land on a...
It's a, it's a gun range, not a bomb range.
Well, we understand that, but the complaints are...
You know, if they want to do bombs, go bring it to Otis, okay? That's what they do. I mean, that's where it goes.
Nuclear bomb?
Not any bark kind of bomb.
If you're on a golf course and you have broken windows and the golf course was there before...
Well, that's a different story. Well, that's because you got a bad golfer, too.
Oh, yeah, someone like you.
You know, you got a bad slice like you.
Tough crowd.
On a...
Please continue, Mr. McGinnis.
On a positive note, there's, people may notice that looming and seating going on in front of the Council on Aging on Dartmouth Street. This is being funded and coordinated by the Friends of the Elderly, so we thank them for that. Also, the COA is having a seniors appreciation night at the Dartmouth High School football game on October 13th, so they'll be busing seniors to the game to be recognized at some point during the game. People may have seen that the DPW Water Division recently received the 2023 Utility of the Year Award from the New England Water Works Association, so congratulations to them. And then lastly, some sad news, our building commissioner is resigning, and he'll be departing at the end of October, on the 27th. He's given his notice, so it's unfortunate. I think Joe has done an excellent job here. I think he's really brought the town to a new level with the permitting system and the coordination of that system. He's worked really hard to make sure all the departments are working well together. I think he's done a phenomenal job. He will be sorely missed, but we will certainly start a search for a new building commissioner soon.
Okay, well, that's...
That's disappointing.
That's new news.
New news. Nuno.
So, at the next meeting, will we hear about the plan to replace, or?
I mean, we'll just, we'll start advertising the position, so...
That's not a lot of time.
Nope. And that's all I have. And then on our old business, Bliss Corner, no new updates, Lake Nokochoke, none, municipal broadband, none, and Mass DEP Title V amendments, no new updates.
Okay, we have minutes to approve, August 28th, 2023.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I will second it. Just have a question about one of the issues, the stone bench. Have we got any donations? Anyone dropped any off for the Moja, that bench?
Not that I'm aware of.
No. Okay. I'll second the...
Okay. Any comments or questions on the motion?
Motion, yeah.
Let's vote. Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, five zero. Motion passes. Minutes are approved. Comments from members?
I do, actually, just something just came up. Can we get, it doesn't have, and he doesn't, does not have to come before us, can we get an update from the DPW on the sidewalk investigation, sidewalk work, sidewalk, you know, as to Have they given a list of, you know, I guess the repairs, sidewalk repairs that are out there? Because there are some, there's some areas where, you know, the developer planted the wrong tree, that the roots are coming up through the sidewalks.
Subdivisions?
In subdivisions, yes. Mostly the subdivision stuff.
The subliminal sidewalks.
They're all over the place.
Yeah, whether or not they decided to that, or will they allow, I don't know, if there's an organization or a homeowners association, will they allow them to remove the sidewalks?
Sidewalks or what, maybe?
Anything, something like that, but, you know...
If you recall, DPW set up a policy probably three, four years ago where, when they have issues like that, they, their policy is to remove the sidewalk and not the tree. So, but I'm not sure. I mean, they have...
Yeah, but if I'm not mistaken, I think they had somebody working on, they were inspecting all the sidewalks to come up with a grade and, or something like that. If we can get some kind of an update on that. And can we also get an update from the Police Department on the activities of our Route Six housing motels and the calls made there? And not looking for any kind of specific details on the calls, but if it was just a call for a disturbance or call for break-in and entering, or if there was a felony, felony drugs, or anything like that? Because I, there was another incident, there was another incident over at the Capri that required the chief and the deputy chief to be there, so I'd like to find out, you know, what's going on there. And lastly, Battleship Harley Davidson, I guess, has held two events in their parking lot. I know there's no, I did not see any licensing for those events. I do know that there was food, this last one, there was food trucks, so I'm assuming the Board of Health was notified for it, but I don't know if there was any kind of a...
Didn't have the date on that?
The last one was, it was yesterday.
And then I wait for you for that?
Oh, Saturday, I'm sorry. It was Saturday.
Doesn't that need your approval for that?
I don't know. That's just it. I don't know if the, whatever they held needed an approval. There was no music, so I, so I know there wasn't any entertainment, so I'm not sure what, what events they held, if they need some kind of approval, but I know there was a lot of traffic, a lot of noise.
Well, traffic alone should mean they should have a...
Motorcycles allowed, which is fine, you hear them, and, which is great, you know? But it's just whether or not the event needed licensing. They need to be made aware of it if they do need licensing. If not, then fine, have fun.
Okay. Anybody else? Mrs. Brooks?
I do not have anything.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yeah, one little comment about Route Six and the state repairing some of those, especially that one near Chipotle, heading east on Route Six. There was a bump that, you know, you'd rattle your teeth when you went over. They did a fine job of break, cutting it all down, making it nice and flat, thank God, because it was just atrocious, terrible. There's still, there are still three or four bad ones, but not like that. That was the worst.
The four, the four worst areas were taken care of. Unfortunately, one of the worst areas is in front of Honda, and half of it was taken care of when the gas line went in, so...
I know that.